A call to order, this meeting of the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission for July the 26th, 2023.
January.
It does say January. I'm sorry.
What's it say?
It had to do with my glasses. Okay, January 26, 2023. I was checking to see if y'all were paying attention. We will start off with our roll call tonight. Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Franks.
Present.
Commissioner Harrison.
Present.
Commissioner Lindsey is present. Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner McLemore.
Here.
Commissioner Orr.
Present.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
And Commissioner Williamson.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Accommodations have been made to ensure that the public is able to participate in this meeting. The public may participate in the following ways. You may watch the TV on Franklin, the meeting on Franklin TV or the City of Franklin website. You may watch the live stream through the City of Franklin Facebook and YouTube accounts. You may email comments to planningintake@franklantn.gov to be provided in full to the commission and included in the minutes but not read aloud in their entirety during the meeting. Email comments are accepted until 12:00 PM, noon on the day before the meeting, or you may comment in person in the boardroom. Speakers will be asked to fill out a speaker card prior to the meeting starting. Speakers may sit in the boardroom or wait in the lobby. So the first item, item number one tonight, is the consideration of approval of the December 8th, 2022 Planning Commission minutes. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
There was a motion by Commissioner Harrison.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Orr. My roll call, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Franks.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore.
Aye.
Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson.
Aye.
And so the minutes, the approval of the minutes passes unanimously. Item number two, it's a consideration of election of Chair and Vice Chair pursuant to Section 4.1.2 of the bylaws. So this is an election we have every January to select leadership going forward.
I nominate Roger Lindsey as Chair.
Second.
So we have a motion for a nomination for Roger Lindsey for Chair, and a second by We'll just, we'll just run through that vote then. Is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
I nominate Michael Orr. Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Franks. Okay, so nomination for Chair, Roger Lindsey, and Vice Chair, Michael Orr. By roll call, Commissioner Allen.
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Commissioner Franks.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey, I'm gonna stand. Commissioner Mann.
Hmm.
And Commissioner.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Were you pondering that? And Commissioner McLemore.
Aye.
Commissioner Orr.
Upstaying.
And Commissioner, Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson.
Yes.
So that nomination and for both Chair and Vice Chair passes.
There's no reason you can't vote yourself.
Aye. Okay, the next item is citizen comments for items that are not on our agenda tonight. This is a time in our meeting that's open for Franklin citizens to be heard on items that are not included on this agenda. As provided by law, the Planning Commission shall make no decisions or consideration of action of citizen comments except to refer the matter to the Planning Director for administrative consideration or to schedule the matter for planning consideration, Planning Commission consideration at a later date. Does anyone from the public wish to speak to the commission tonight? Seeing none, are there any, okay, staff, do we have any, any citizen comments for? Okay, I think not. Okay, announcements. Emily, welcome back, Emily.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Good to see all of you. I just have a couple of announcements coming up in February. We're kicking off some more meetings for the Invision Franklin update, Conference of Update. So on Friday, February 17th, from 8:00 AM to noon, we will be having the joint Planning Commission and Board of Mayor and Aldermen work session at Eastern Flank. That will be from 8:00 to noon, and we'll have an agenda sent out to you ahead of time, but we are working on that now. I think you'll be excited to talk about the topics that have kind of risen to the top from the interviews that we did with each of you. So I really anticipate having some great discussion. It will be slightly led by a staffing consultant, but very limited amount of information from us and mainly all discussion based from you and the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. So we really want to hear from you at that, that meeting.
Okay.
And then the night before that, on February 16th, that's a Thursday, from 5:30 to 7:00, we will be having a special topical meeting. It's a public meeting for an idea that originated with Alderman Brown and Alderman Baggett and has since been presented to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to look at doing some visioning for the factory area and that neighborhood around, the various areas around it, to consider a factory district and having some special kind of planning initiatives centered just around that area and what the vision for the area could be. Really focusing on place making, streets around the area, maybe making it more pedestrian-friendly, more walkable, looking at land uses, the inclusion of more arts, public art specifically, various things like that. There is not a vision for it yet, so we're having this public meeting to really just get some initial feedback from the public. We really encourage you to attend if you're able to. I think there's a lot of energy behind this idea, and it could be a really exciting experience to get the public involved and the property owners involved to kind of on the front end get more of a vision set as the factory is already undergoing some changes, and this would be inclusive of some of the properties around it as well. So I just wanted you to all be aware of it. You do have a handout at your desk that's kind of a first draft of some things, some things we've been working on, but I will note that it is at the factory at Franklin on February 16th, but it is in Liberty Hall, not the Heritage Room. So just make note of that. We are updating all of our public materials currently to make sure it says Liberty Hall because we just were notified of that change.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, next is a vote to place non-agenda items on the agenda. The non-agenda process by design is reserved for emergency instances. Non-agenda items shall be considered only upon the unanimous approval of all of the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission members. So are there any non-agenda items proposed to be placed on the agenda tonight?
There are not.
There are not, thank you. Okay. Item number three is the consideration for the planning, for the consent agenda, and so we've got items listed as items four through 21 and items 28 through 30 of our agenda, which are listed on the consent agenda, and these are items that will be considered by the Planning Commission as a group without individual discussion, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll need to step out for the items 15 and 16 and recuse myself because I live in River Bluff.
Okay, so you're living in that neighborhood. So we can pull those two items and we'll just modify the Planning Commission, I mean the consent agenda, to exclude those two, and then we'll pick those out. So the consideration of items then would be four through 14, 17 through 21, and then 28 through 30 would be the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of consent agenda?
Motion for approval.
Have a motion for approval by Commissioner McLemore, and seconded by Commissioner Harrison. So by roll call, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Franks.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore.
Aye.
Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson.
Aye.
That motion passes. And so we'll pick up those first two items. Item number 15, River Bluff PUD subdivision, final section one, the, the action is to extend the performance agreement for green infrastructure improvement to July the 27th, So staff presentation?
Yes, I can handle that one. As you know, we don't provide staff reports for sureties. As the Chair mentioned, this action recommendation is to extend the performance agreement until July 27th, 2023, and I can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, is there anyone from the applicant represented tonight? No, okay. So is there a motion on this item? Does anybody, yeah, let's have a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, made by Commissioner Franks, and seconded by Commissioner Allen. So is there any discussion? Anybody have any questions? And you were recused, okay.
We're doing 15 and 16 at the same time.
We're doing the same, we're doing the same thing.
It's consent agenda, second consent.
We just do second.
Okay, that's, that's good. So, so the item number 16, I'll read. River Bluff PUD subdivision site plan, section one, reduces the performance agreement for the landscaping improvements by 50% to $81,000 and extend that agreement, the performance agreement, to September 28th, 2023. So, anything further, staff? Okay. So we'll cover that, if permissible, Commissioner Franks, we'll cover that on your original motion and seconded by Commissioner Allen. So we've got a, we've got a proper motion and second for both items 15 and 16 as a consent. So we will proceed through roll call vote. Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Franks.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Mann recuses. Commissioner McLemore.
Aye.
Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson.
Aye.
So that motion passes to approve both items 15 and 16 as consent. Next up is item number 22, consideration of Resolution 2022-83, a resolution amending the Coletta Park PUD subdivision to extend the vested rights for the property located northeast of South Carruthers Road and south of Murfreesboro Road. Staff presentation?
Good evening. Yes, Resolution 2022-83 is a consideration of a vesting extension for the Coletta Park PUD subdivision. The request is to extend the vesting period from December 12th, 2023, to December 12th, 2026, which is three years, to allow the applicant to commence construction. If the vesting period is not extended, the project entitlements would cease to exist and stop work orders would be issued if applicable on the December 12th, 2023 date. A new development plan would need to be approved and it would be reviewed against the current development standards. In reviewing the plan against the current city regulations for the staff report, the current plan generally complies. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to approve Resolution 2022-83 if they determine that the continuation of vested rights is in the best interest of the community. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this item? Yes, ma'am, please come to the lectern and ask you to give us your name and address and make your comments, please.
Janet Curtis, 3665 North Chapel Road, Franklin. And this is for 22 and then 23, the annexation of the 4.7 acres. Basically, I don't know that any of this can be stopped, but I think you need to be aware that it's a safety concern to the citizens of this whole community. 96, the, the bridge between 96 or over 65, there are times when you cannot even get an emergency vehicle through there. I personally have had to sit through four and five lights and call the police to try to get off of the interstate because of the traffic. It's a choke point in Franklin and nothing can be done about it at this point. There are already two other subdivisions being built in the county that will be feeding into this area, and I think you can do condemnation of a property if it's in the betterment interest of the community. What can we do to, for the betterment of the citizens in the community? We need to slow down the growth, we need to take the safety into consideration. 96 is currently under construction. There have been at least four accidents in that construction zone with one of the big of the fatality of a 24-year-old young man. The speed limit is 45 on that road. I travel that road countless number of times during the day, and I can't tell you the number of people that are on my bumper, tailgating me because of going 45 miles an hour. That is a, it's, it's like the interstate, it's like 70 miles an hour even through the construction. We need to let everything settle down, we need to have the construction done. You have Clovercroft, 395 homes going in on Clovercroft. You've got all of this that's feeding into that choke point of Murfreesboro Road and 96 at 65. I think for the safety of the community, you need to reconsider your, your votes and see if this can be considered for the betterment of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this item?
Is this about this one or is it about the 4.7 acres down in?
Both, because they're both the same area.
Both, okay.
Okay.
But, but this is also, this is also talking about the 4.7 acres.
Correct, because there is Ridgeway and Murfreesboro Road.
Exactly.
So it's right in that same area.
Okay, item number 24, 23, okay. Okay, is anyone here representing the applicant on this item?
Good evening, my name's Dan Crunk. I'm here to represent the developer of Coletta Park, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve made by Commissioner Franks, and seconded by Commissioner Harrison. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, Commissioner Alderman Peterson?
I, I had sent back to staff about, you know, and I tried to drive back out there to see, I don't remember how the, the road connections are because, you know, this is one of those places where the county, Williamson County, denied access to roads that are inside the county but not inside the City of Franklin. So I'd just like to hear something about that.
Yeah, I can answer that question. When Coletta Park was approved, the, the county roads closed public access to them. On the Coletta Park side, we put in emergency access gates, and so there's allowed emergency access through those roads but not public access.
Well, if I could ask, what, what roads are actually not just a emergency access? Where does this connect to roads that are not emergency access?
So this connects down at South Carruthers Road, right at the bend there, and there was a limit placed on the original plan that after 130 units, they did have to find a secondary connection point.
Thank you.
That was actually where I was coming from, because I remember there was a conflict as far as connectivity, because you know, always drive home and then that, okay. So that is still in place?
Yeah, it was a condition of approval, and if, yes, if the vesting gets extended, everything along with it, including the conditions of approval, still apply.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
My only comments around the, the off-site traffic improvements, and it sounds like we approved some other projects based on those occurring. I, you know, I don't remember that specifically, but I guess I would just curious, going, going forward, nothing we do about, now going forward, is there a way to make sure we articulate to, to this commission when off-site improvements are anticipated but not actually, you know, I'm not sure how they're presented to us because it doesn't happen very often, but I want to make sure we're not approving projects with something that might not happen. You know, does that make sense? That's, that's tough because we're relying on a developer to move forward, obviously, with a project that's approved. Right. We do have an approved site plan for the improvements on South Carruthers Road is to fix that pretty drastic curve right there at the entrance, and we have factored that into other approved developments. As long as the project is vested, we count that as an improvement that will occur. But we do struggle with the phasing, and what we do is usually have those other traffic models when they come in, model with and without, and see how that looks for us. But at this point, none of the projects have come forward in this area since we approved this one, so we're really just waiting on this project to get going and then, and it, and there could be a circumstance where we, where we would see the need to come back to the Planning Commission and Board and possibly shift the offset agreement dollars from one developer to another so we could get those improvements done. It would really be, as, as other projects come online, as needed for, for those improvements to be done. So it's, it's tricky because we rely on the developer to perform and install the improvements, and we're, we're kind of stuck with. Yeah. Making those decisions of when, when they can occur, when other developments can occur ahead of those, and hopefully they all come in line as, as they are approved, right? So. I think, I think my ask is, and, and maybe this occurs because this is, this is pretty rare, I guess, but it's just when, when those, when traffic impacts are presented to us, let's make sure that they do show for things that aren't done and it's, the, the project hasn't started, the developer hasn't started the project yet, to show that with and without. Because I just want to make sure I have full transparency, because I, I know when I've looked at the traffic studies and the impacts, I've just assumed that, that work is, you know, at least been started or done, so to make sure we're being transparent about it and. It is rare. Don't take that as a negative. It's hard. It is rare that, right, it's, it's rare that a project doesn't move forward in the City of Franklin once it gets entitled, so this is a, fortunately, a rare circumstance for us, but we are watching it closely, and as other projects come online, we, we look at those with and without the improvements, and if they need to be made sooner than the other development comes online, we'll come back and have that discussion certainly. Okay.
Can you update us on that, the improvements to the 96, I-65 bridge and that choke point that she mentioned? And, because it is getting really bad and it's going to get worse with.
So we've had discussions with TDOT. They have not moved forward with any funding or dollars for the improvements. It would be a very expensive project, a complete redesign of the bridge and the interchange, so at this point in time, TDOT has not come forward with any, with any project at this time, so.
Is there a certain traffic count that warrants it like a traffic plan?
Typically, you would see if there was failure that was impacting the interstate, then at that time, TDOT would look at a safety protocol improvement. We're just not quite there yet, so it's, it's impacting unfortunately 96 more than the interstate at this time.
I know we had it on the long-range initiative, you know, has it moved up any notches? But it was way down the line, but she's right, you can't get a fire truck through there, a police truck through there during certain times. It's just, it's a mess.
I agree. At, at this point, I'm not aware that it's moved up at all, but we certainly, it is one of our most troubling corridors at this point.
Is that 20-year long-range plan?
I would like it to be 10.
Five.
Five.
Okay.
Close him, Jim.
Any other discussion, question? See, now we've got a motion to approve the extension of vesting. Motion made by Commissioner Franks and seconded by Commissioner Harrison with no more discussion. By roll call, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Franks.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore.
Aye.
Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number 23 is part of a three-item series. This is consideration of Resolution 2022-88, a resolution adopting a plan of services for the annexation of a property located south of Murfreesboro Road and east of Ridgeway Drive by the City of Franklin, Tennessee. Staff presentation?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a plan of service for the property located off of Murfreesboro Road. Resolution 22, 2022-88 is a City of Franklin drafted plan of service for the property being considered as part of the proposed requested annexation. Resolution 2022-89, the plan of service, I'm sorry, Resolution 2022-89 is the resolution for the annexation. The plan of services outlines how infrastructure will need to be provided to serve the property of 4.7 acres. The Watson Branch Drainage Basin is almost entirely composed of existing city properties, and this is one of the few remaining to be annexed. The property is within the Millcrofton Service Area, and water availability shall be approved and provided by Millcrofton prior to annexation. The owner will not be required to extend the sanitary sewer to provide service to the property as an existing sewer main is present on the property. Access to the property shall be provided from Murfreesboro Road, and further study of the type and location of access shall be looked at when the site, when the site plan is submitted. Engineering shall have the right to restrict access in accordance with the Franklin street standards. Unless waived by the Franklin Engineering Department, the owner of the property shall be required to submit a traffic impact study for review and approval. The exact scope associated with the traffic impact study shall be determined prior to the middle of a site plan. Required street improvements shall be determined as part of any site plan, and the development on this property is limited due to the steep slopes anywhere from 10% and 20% plus that are present on the site. No additional manpower or equipment will be necessary for either fire, police protection, or sanitation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to approve Resolution 2022-89. This concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you, staff. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, is there someone from the applicant represented in that? Seeing none, is there someone from the applicant represented tonight?
Yes, thank you. Adam Sager, Dale and Associates, 516 Heather Place. Thank you for the presentation, Chelsea. The property we're looking at is four point seven acres. It's owned by a gentleman who lives and works here in Franklin. He called us up, said, hey, I want to build my house here. And there's a sewer main in front. And so we call Franklin, say, hey, you guys got a sewer main in front? Can we tap into it? And I talked to Ben and he said, well, you know, to tap into the Franklin sewer, it's better if you're city property. And we're in this little kind of pocket where we're still in county property. And that was kind of the motivation for us to start an annexation process. And so the owner is planning on subdividing this property into probably two lots, one to build his own house on, one for maybe a family member. So it's not a developer doing this. There is an existing access on ninety-six. It's, I don't know if there's any air holes, but there is one little driveway. It kind of comes across the creek. He'll continue to use that. So we're here to answer any questions if you have them. I know we've got twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five here, but I won't get up again unless you guys have questions. So, thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion for this item?
Move for approval.
Second. And this is, this is for a recommendation of approval to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen?
Yes.
By Commissioner McLemore and seconded by Commissioner Harrison. Is that, is that here?
Correct, great.
Is there any discussion, questions? Seeing none by roll call, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Franks?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner McLemore?
Aye.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson?
Aye.
That motion passes. Item number twenty-four, also on that same project. Consideration of Resolution 2022 dash eighty-nine, a resolution to annex a property on Murfreesboro Road consisting of four point seven acres located south of Murfreesboro Road and east of Ridgeway Drive and adjoining the city limits within the eastern part of the Franklin urban growth boundary, the UGB. Staff presentation?
Thank you. The property being considered for annexation is located east of Ridgeway Drive. It is contiguous to the city limits and it's within the city's urban growth boundary. This property was not included in the growth area study from 2016 as it is within the Watson Branch Drainage Basin. The Watson Branch Drainage Basin is almost entirely composed of existing city properties and this is one of the few remaining to be annexed. This property is contiguous to the city and the, on the north and south, but would be adjacent to county properties on the west and east. The subject property is within the single-family residential design concept as defined by Envision Franklin Land Use Plan. No additional plan for further development of the property has been submitted at this time. The applicant intends to subdivide the property into two single-family residential lots. A zoning for the subject property is also included on this agenda. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to approve Resolution 2022 dash eight-nine. This concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, the applicant is here. If anybody has questions or is there a motion on this item?
Move for approval to
Second.
Board of Mayor and Aldermen.
So you have a motion for recommending approval to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen by Commissioner Harrison and a second by Commissioner Orr. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none by roll call, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Franks?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner McLemore?
Aye.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson?
Aye.
That motion passes. The third of the items on that same property. Item number twenty-five is consideration of ordinance 2022 dash forty-eight, an ordinance to zone four point seven acres, a state residential or ER district for the property located south of Murfreesboro Road and east of Ridgeway Drive. Staff presentation?
Thank you. The applicant for the property, the subject property, has submitted an annex, an annexation application without a zoning request. A zoning district must be assigned to any annexed property. Chapter twenty of the zoning ordinance allows for either AG or ER zoning districts. Staff finds that a state residential or ER is the most appropriate of the two options should the plan of services and annexation be approved by BOMA. Design concept of single-family residential and the existing residential development surrounding the subject property are staff's support for this, this designation. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to approve ordinance 2022 dash four-eight. This concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, the applicant is present. So is there a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
You have a motion for approval by Commissioner Mann?
Second.
And that's a recommendation of approval to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen.
To a state residential.
And to a state residential.
Second.
Okay, and a second by Commissioner Harrison. And any further discussion? You're okay with those tweakings of your, of your motion? Okay, by roll call vote, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Franks?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner McLemore?
Aye.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson?
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you, Alan. Adam? Item number twenty-six, this is the first of two items on this property. Consideration of ordinance 2022 dash forty-six, an ordinance to rezone one point zero eight acres from Residential Four, our four district, to planned PD five thousand five hundred and seventy-eight district for the property located west of West Main Street and south of Eastview Drive, located at six twenty-sixth Eastview Drive. This is the My Friends House PUD subdivision. We saw this presented at Joint Conceptual last month, I believe. So staff presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The My Friends House Family and Children's Services has been located on this property for approximately twenty-five years and they would like to increase the number of available beds from eight to twelve. A property with more than eight beds is classified as a group home, which is an institutional use, so the property must be rezoned. The lot is within the historic residential design concept as designated by Envision Franklin. Group homes are classified as institutional use, which is allowed as a secondary use within the historic residential design concept, so the zoning can be supported. The corresponding development plan for My Friends House PUD is also on the agenda this evening. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2022 dash forty-six to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? There's precious little public left, so. Okay, is there anyone here from the applicant, representing the applicant tonight? Come forward, please.
Steve King, board member for My Friends House.
Kevin Hacker, board member of My Friends House.
Great. Okay, does anybody, so this was presented at Joint Conceptual last month. Does anyone have any questions for the representatives tonight? Do you have a motion for this item?
Recommend approval to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harrison and a second by Commissioner Franks recommending approval to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Franks?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore?
Aye.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. The next item on that same project. Consideration of Resolution 2022 dash eighty-seven, a resolution approving a development plan for the My Friends House PUD subdivision for the property located west of West Main Street and south of Eastview Drive, located at six twenty-sixth Eastview Drive. Staff presentation, Joey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With planned districts, they must have an accompanying development plan. So similar to what I said in the rezoning, they are wanting to increase the number of available beds for the My Friends House from eight to twelve. It is located within the historic residential design concept, which does allow for institutional uses as a secondary use for the district. So with this development plan, there are no additional buildings or site changes being proposed. They are able to use the existing facility because it was designed to accommodate twelve beds and two staff members. So no additional construction will be associated with this development plan. So with that, staff recommends approval of Resolution 2022 dash eighty-seven to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I assume no public comment since there's none left. And the applicant is present. So is there a motion on this item?
Move for approval to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen.
A second.
So a motion for approval to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen by Commissioner Harrison and a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Franks?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore?
Aye.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Are there any other, thank you, gentlemen. Are there any other non-agenda items for us to hear tonight? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move for.
We have a motion by Commissioner Orr and seconded. Is that you, Mr. Harrison?